All right, we'll start the meeting now. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to see the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I'd like to take this moment to, first of all, thank Mr. Kopeck from the Town Council for being with us tonight. And we have some special guests from Troop 86 who are here earning your communications badge, is that correct? Would you like to get up and introduce yourselves?
My name's Eli Effert from Troop 86. My name's Eli Effert from Troop 86, and we're here to take notes and observations on your, like, on your meeting for our communications merit badge and just like different points of view and stuff.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here, and we hope you get something out of this. We will move on to Item 1.0, which is a presentation for the Open Choice Program. In regards to the Open Choice Program, we welcome Charlene Russell Tucker and Glenn Peterson. Thank you. I'd like to welcome our guests as well. Hi, my name is Fisher. Each year, the Board of Education is asked around the end of February or into March if you will accept more open choice students. These are students from Hartford who are coming into our schools. They're both Ms. Russell Tucker and Mr. Peterson are going to share the program with you. Our board has chosen in the last four years not to accept new students. So five years ago, we had 25. This year, we have five. So our students have been aging out and graduating, and we've had fewer and fewer students taking a trip from Hartford to join us for their educational career because it is preferable that they come for the whole 12 years or 13 years, depending on how many. So I'm going to turn this back over, and I'm hoping this will be an opportunity for board members to ask questions. You're not going to be asked that question tonight of yes or no, so this is informational so that when it comes back up on the agenda, which will most likely be the first meeting in March, that you'll be able to make an informed decision. So again, I welcome Mrs. Russell Tucker and Mr. Peterson.
Thank you very much, and thank you for holding the snow so that we could come in and make this presentation to you. And Dr. Conroy, thank you very much. We've had the conversation, and so we look forward to sharing information to you tonight that you will be able to, as you mentioned, make informed decisions. So we're really pleased to be here. Glenn Peterson is our regional, our director for Regional School Choice Office, and so he's going to do the lion's share of the presentation. But I wanted to just thank you for the opportunity to be here, and please ask any questions that you have of us. That's really why we're here. We like to provide that level of support to our districts. Sometimes there's so much nuance kinds of things that it makes sense for us to be here to answer any questions that you may have. So thank you very much. I'm going to turn things over to Glenn to get us started.
Well, and just let me echo what Charlene said. Thank you so much for having us. I've been making presentations like this for the last two winters, really, but typically not to whole boards, but more to, you know, superintendents and small subcommittees. So you're my first really big audience, so I'm excited, particularly excited to be here. And I'm going to tend not to read these slides, but kind of talk about each of them. The first is about the history of the Open Choice Program, and this is a very old program. It started in the mid-'60s. It originally was called Project Concern. In the late '90s, it became part of the CHEF world, and the name was changed to the Open Choice Program. The program is kind of run for the state by CREG, the Capital Region Education Council, kind of under the direction of my office. So I work very closely with the CREG Director of Open Choice. Students are selected through the Regional School Choice Lottery, which is going on as we speak. In fact, the deadline for open choice applications is this week on Friday, February 27. There are currently approximately 2,200 students involved in the Open Choice Program in 130 schools and 28 different school districts around the region, and later, there's a list of those districts. Vernon is one of them. The program goals are very simple: to improve academic achievement, to reduce racial, ethnic, and economic isolation, encourage diversity, and to provide a choice of educational programs for students. Actually, Charlene, will you take this slide?
Sure. The Department of Education, in all its work, this is a part of the area of oversight that I have responsibility for. So the Regional School Choice Office that Glenn heads up oversees the application, oversees the placement, the waitlist for students who are applying to the Hartford Regional School Choice Program, and also the inter-district magnet schools. It also oversees, believe it or not, transportation for all the students. It is a large transportation program for all the students that do participate. So that's the Regional School Choice Office. There's a CHEF office that oversees the implementation of the stipulated agreement that we have, the CHEF versus O'Neill State Supreme Court case. So we have stipulated agreement in terms of what we all plan to do in a bye-bye in that agreement. Seat declaration process also occurs in that office, and we also, we'll hear more about later, academic and social support grant to districts that administer the program, and that's also administered through the CHEF office. Or districts, and actually families, may also have contact with our Choice Bureau that is also in the division that I oversee, that administers and provide oversight of the attendance grant and funding and the management of all the open choice programs in the state. So that work is pretty much connected. Glenn is a part of our leadership, the senior leadership team within the agency, and I provide oversight as a chief operating officer for that work.
Thank you, Charlene. So I mentioned a little bit the application and lottery process. The application window opened in mid-November and, as I said, will close at the end of February. We ask for seat declarations from districts. You can do them anytime up till June, but by March 1st is preferable, but not necessary. And then we do initial placement rounds following the initial lottery, which we hope to draw in early to mid-April. Then we have rolling enrollment that goes, it can go all the way through October, the beginning of October. We let to stock enrollment prior to the beginning of the school year, so of course, all the kids can be in their seats, registered, ready to go when school starts. There are a number of services provided really by us through CREG to support the Open Choice Program. There are student support specialists that work in various districts to help and support students. There are guidance counselors. There are social workers for Midland High School students. There are early beginning resource teachers who work specifically with pre-K and kindergarten students to get them off to a good start. For each five students that a district has, for example, in kindergarten, they get one day of support. So if there are 10 students, of course, there would be two days of support from one of the early beginnings resource specialists. There are also facilitators for special education issues to be supportive of both the students and the district. There are a number of additional programs, such as the summer program, after-school program, unity teams for high school students, and there's even parent training available through The next slide, number six, is simply a list of towns that are participating in the Open Choice Program. There are a number of professional development opportunities. Some are free and some are at a cost basis, but of course, can be paid for through the academic and social support grant. But the free ones include anti-defamation, anti-defamation, sorry, anti-defamation league programs relating to cultural response of education and issues about race and ethnicity. We're running a book club that runs every year the book they're reading now. In fact, I say "they," but we too, in my office, are reading it. Why Race and Culture Matter in Schools. There's a professional development grant of $5,000 as part of the academic and social support grant. There's an availability of some research projects. There's one going now with the University of Connecticut, and of course, that's something that you volunteer to be part of. And again, we mentioned unity teams. You can think of unity teams as, at the high school level, I don't want to diminish them by saying they're club-like, but it would be a group of students getting together after school on a regular basis to deal with issues relating to race, diversity, and subjects like that. There are also a number of for-fee services relating to school climate, coaching, inclusion, anti-bullying, PDAS support, but I know Dr. Conroy knows about those things that are available through CREG. The next several pages are about all of the funding options that are paid to districts for taking students into the Open Choice Program. Some of them are on a per-student basis, some of them, and some of the incentives are based on the percentage of students that are in the district. The mainstay is the attendance grant, and on the top of Page 8, you can see the different levels of payment that districts can receive based on the percentage of students. As Dr. Conroy was saying, you have five students in Vernon, that's well under 2% of the school population, and currently Vernon receives $3,000 per student who attends. Some districts have upwards of 4% of the students participating, and they receive $8,000 per student. And of course, that's a little easier to achieve if you're in a small district with, say, 1,000 students than in a large district worth several thousands. You receive additional ECS funding as a result of taking open choice students as well. When you're a business manager or whoever does leave it, ECS enrollment calculations that are sent to the state for each child enrolled in the Open Choice Program, you get an additional half-child counted in your ECS. So I know that Vernon's, I believe or understand that Vernon's ECS is approximately $5,000 per student. So if there are, say, 10 students, you would get basically five, half credit for each student, five students times 5,000, an additional 25,000-ish in your ECS. Early beginnings, again, in the bottom of Page 8, is a program for preschool and kindergartners. Because you realize that you need more support for students in the early years, we pay an additional $4,500 per child at those grade levels. On to Page 9. This is the academic and social support grant. There's a per-pupil amount. It is a little bit different in the elementary school. It's greater in the middle and high school levels. But there are also tiered incentives. A district can earn an additional $50,000 to $158,000 based on the percentage of kids that are in the program. And finally, there are some bonus, bonuses and set-asides. Doing your seat declaration by March 1st gets a bonus. Last year, it was in the neighborhood of $450 per student for declaring before March 1st. Schools that have at least 10 students in open choice get another bonus. Last year, we started, oh, sorry, I jumped ahead of myself. There's a construction bonus, so if you're doing school construction, you can get a bonus for that, depending on the number of open choice kids that are in the district. There's also something we started last year, a capital funds grant. We had $750,000 that we gave to districts. It amounts up to $75,000 to help districts do things to support not only the Open Choice Program, but the school in general. And some of the things that districts did were use the money to renovate classrooms for preschool. A district did a library renovation. One district built a STEM lab, so that included actually the construction, furniture fixtures, and also some technology for that program. That was in Windsor Locks. So that's available this year as well. And the last, not the last two pages, but Pages 11 and 12, I have developed a couple of scenarios just to kind of do the math for you. So on Page 11, I made the assumption that there would be 24, you know, say, this program's relatively new, 24 students, 12 in kindergarten, 12 in first grade, 24 total. That's 7% of Vernon's school population, or 0.7%. And I calculated the attendance grant, early beginnings, the academic and social support, professional development, bonuses, and additional ECS for a total of about $250,000. Not a whole lot of money, but we're talking about 24 kids here. And one of the things you'll notice is that even though this is just slightly under $10,000 per child, we pay for transportation, which is a big chunk of the cost of, you know, when you're calculating per pupil, and that any special ed costs for students in the Open Choice Program are limited to the amount of the attendance grant that you receive. And on Page 12 is another scenario, you know, kind of imagining a larger number of students. I won't read through that. You can understand what I did and see it yourselves. And I don't think I need to go into transportation on Page 13, but we do provide transportation from, for students here and back, and of course, we also provide late buses for students who they can participate in district things, sports teams, clubs, after-school activities and the like. One late bus per school, Midland High School level. And I believe that's just our contact information, and I know I spoke very quickly because I thought you had important business to do after we got, so we're open for any questions if anyone has.
Mr. Stansfield.
Thank you. Through you, ma'am chair. Can you comment a little more on the special education costs? That was often a sticking point for us. It felt like we, as the town, were getting saddled with more special education costs for an open choice student than we would have for one of our own.
Your responsibility is the amount of the enrollment grant. So currently Vernon receives $3,000 per student. That, that is the top end of any special ed cost that would relate to outside placement and those types of things. Now, if a student were in the, in the school and, you know, receiving some support from a special ed teacher, some support from a para, you know, outside of, say, like a one-on-one para for the child, your caps are, your costs are capped.
I'm sorry, so?
So, for example, Hartford would be responsible for payment?
Anything over that amount would go back to the district.
Okay, thank you. So in this scenario that a child needed a one-on-one para, for instance, then above the $3,000, Hartford would be absorbing the cost?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Bush.
I have a lot of questions. What is the graduation rate for students in the, in the Open Choice Program?
It varies, it varies from town to town. I don't know exactly what it is overall, but I think you're asking the question because you're thinking the way that I am. Our goal is to have every student graduate so that they have a wonderful experience, they love coming to school, they're in nurturing environment, and they're pushed to not only graduate from high school, but go on to college in rates that are similar or above even the local rate.
Okay. It'd be nice to have that number, though, so it does, it is helpful because that's something we look at very closely in our school district. Now, if they are special ed or at risk, would we know about that before we accepted the students?
No, it's a blind lottery, and therefore, we do not, we do not prescreen students. All students have the right to apply and participate in both magnet schools and open choice.
Okay. My next question is, do the open choice students' test scores count in our scores, or do they revert back to their sending school?
They're, they're your students and part of your test scores and part of your attendance and enrollment and everything else.
Okay. Another question that came up, you spoke about them, you have students that apply for seats in, in outside districts as well as magnet and charter schools? Can you give me an idea of how many students are placed in the magnet or charter schools? It doesn't have to be exact.
This number I know probably more closely. Last year, we had approximately 20,000 total applications. It was just over 20,000 for both magnets and open choice. We don't have anything, our office doesn't have anything to do with charter schools.
Okay.
About 3,000 of those applicants were for open choice, and there are about 400 new placements last year, both suburban and into Hartford and Hartford out. The vast, the vast majority of those in open choice were Hartford out to suburbs.
Now, the students, do they, when they come in, are they automatically on free or reduced, or do they go through the same process?
Same process.
Same screening process. Okay. All right. I still have more, sort of. Now, you, you had support for special ed students and families in the district. What does the support look like for the students and family on a daily basis? Are there actual people in the schools? Are there, is it something that we could count on on a daily basis?
It runs differently in different districts. CREG employs a number of support specialists that have several districts as part of their portfolio, you know, maybe four or five districts. And depending on the number of students you have in the district, would have something to do with how much time people spend there. What most districts seem to do is use the monies from the academic and social support grant to hire people themselves to support not only the open choice kids, but others. So for example, if a district is getting somewhere in the range of $250,000 from the academic and social support grant, they can use that to hire people to provide those types of services. And so many districts do that. I was in Weathersfield yesterday, and they have, I believe, two people at the elementary level and one person at the middle and one person at the high school. They have many, you know, many, many kids in the program, and so they have hefty funding for that.
Okay. Also, talking about the professional development opportunities, a lot of, there's a whole list of them that would be for a fee.
Yes.
Would that depend on how many students are placed, or is it just a flat fee for, like, the PDIS and the bullying prevention?
Those are, I give this presentation in concert with the Open Choice Director from CREG, and those are CREG services that typically are hired on a day-to-day basis. So for example, if the district wanted three days of PDIS training for a certain elementary school over the course of the year, they would hire CREG to provide that kind of thing. I don't know exactly what the rates are, but...
Okay, but they wouldn't be refunded to us to help our school district at all?
No, those are, those are for-fee things.
Okay.
They're not free.
All right.
But again, if you had, you had money in the academic and social support grant, you could use the money that you received to pay for that type of thing.
Okay, you, you said that the students count for half of an ECS. Is that one and a half? So do they count one for us and a half?
No.
Or do they count only one half?
Correct.
Okay, so there, the amount that we're getting would be in lieu of them counting for our district in our ECS formulation, and we would just get a half?
You actually get quite a bit more. If your ECS is $5,000 and it's slightly over that, for each, for each student who's, I'm sorry, am I too far from the mic? For each student who is in the Open Choice Program, you would get half credit or $2,500, plus you get all of the other things on the, on the list. So you end up getting quite a bit more than $5,000, which is the ECS payment for the open choice students.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I think you've answered all.
My pleasure.
Mrs. Russell?
Thank you. You, with transportation, students in grades pre-K and 3 must be picked up by a parent. What does that mean? Does it mean that they're transported to school, perhaps be picked up later? I know that young.
I think what that's referring to, let me just go to that page.
It's Page 13.
Oh, no, no, no. That means that the buses won't drop the students off without a parent there to meet them at the end of the bus stop. So at the end of the school day, in, in most places, there are central stops, so we don't want a group of elementary school students without their parents to just get off at the corner of whatever two streets or at the church parking lot, you know, in Hartford somewhere, without mom and dad, mom or dad or someone to meet them.
I understand, and that's, that's a good policy. What's the time that these children have to be at a bus stop, the real young ones?
It really varies, you know, by the bell times. But I was a magnet school principal for 10 years, and so I had students from Hartford coming out to my school that was in Glastonbury. School started at 8:50, maybe a 30 to 40 minute bus ride, 10, 10 to 8, probably, an hour, like an hour before school started.
And when would they get home? About an hour later?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a long day.
It is a long day for them.
So, and parents are choosing to participate because they want, you know, a different education for their students.
Okay. My next question is, and I don't know whether we can answer it or they can answer, but have we ever surveyed the students that were participants here?
Not to my knowledge.
Have you ever surveyed?
Have we surveyed students in Vernon? No, we have not. I just learned, though, I'm doing a lot of these meetings this month, and I was in Berlin earlier in the week, and the Assistant Superintendent there told me that they did video filming of students who participated in their program at the high school level. And I haven't yet seen them, but he promised to send me a CD, so I'm looking very, looking forward to seeing what they had to say.
Dr. Conroy, although we haven't done a survey, have you kept, any, kept up with any tallies of how well or how, you know, how the students are doing, if I, they're still in the system?
Since I've been here, so for five years, the students who were in district have progressed to each grade level, and those who were supposed to graduate have graduated. So we haven't seen any attrition for any other reason than graduation of the students who were here.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Conroy.
My question, a family that chooses to participate in a program in Hartford is a example, does that work?
A family that, in Hartford, that chooses to participate, and they look at the available choices for the number of towns and so on, and they have a number of considerations. South Woods is a lot closer than Cromwell, as an example. Do they have a choice of towns that are available, or how does that side of the process work?
Thank you. I guess I should have mentioned that when I was talking about the lottery process. Students and their families can make up to five choices in terms of districts. However, we, we restrict their choices to some degree because of transportation, actually. Hartford is broken up into four zones, you know, kind of northeast, northwest, southeast, southwest. And students in kind of the northeast zones can select from towns, kind of in that area, and then so on, so that we are not picking up students at the, you know, far southwestern corner and bringing them, like, into a town to the far northeast. But they can make up to five choices. They can also choose what we call the all, kind of, open choice only, or all open choice, so they can kind of make a broader choice as well. And so, in some cases, if, if districts have kind of run out of applicants for certain grade levels and they'd like students there, we can kind of go back to the pool who have kind of said they wouldn't want going to any place and kind of have a pool there and make an offer.
Additionally, children that are with special educational needs, in the process, even though it's blind...
[inaudible]
even though it's blind, is there a certain distribution so that one town doesn't have a complete difficult situation as opposed to somewhat easier situation where the student might be more capable?
It really is a blind lottery, and we not only don't, but I don't believe can, take those things into account prior to the lottery itself. So, it's, it's a lottery, so it's truly blind.
The lottery is done and the placements are made without trying to probe into the student's background?
Thank you.
Mr. Stansfield.
Thank you, just one more question, and I think the answer is yes, but as the receiving district, we are allowed to determine what grade level students we would accept? So, we could say, you know, we can take ten first graders or...
Absolutely. The processes of seat declarations and what we do is encourage districts to, one, look at, look at, look and see if there are any siblings of students who are already in your district, kind of the first group. Many districts prefer to take the young, very young students. Kindergarteners are probably the highest group that districts ask for, with the idea that you take, say, you know, a number of kindergarteners, they grow and go through the district, and the twelfth graders graduate, and you get a new crop of kindergarteners and you keep them for, for their educational career. But we have really detailed data. A lot of times what happens is a, a family of two or three kids will apply to a single district. There may not be a child from the family here in Vernon, but they might want to all come to Vernon for, for whatever reason. Could have even been that, you know, one of the parents was involved in the program in the nineties or something like that. So that we can provide you with all of that data when you're kind of ready to make what we call seat declarations and say where you'd like kids in the various grades.
Mrs. Russell?
Have, have any of the students entered into this program previously and went back? And why, if that's the case?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
In the past five years or eight years.
It, it does happen in places though.
Why?
Well, there are a variety of reasons. You know, students, I think the most common reason for students to, to leave the open choice program throughout is that they move out of Hartford. This is a program specifically for students who live in Hartford to go to a suburban district. If they move from Hartford and say move to West Hartford or East Hartford or Manchester or somewhere else, they're no longer eligible to participate. That's not to say that things don't happen. You know, I was a magnet school principal and things happen at school and a family may be unhappy for a reason, but because they chose to come, they can also choose to leave and go back to their home school, whether the home school was in Vernon or in Hartford. So, they can just make choices for a variety of reasons.
Anybody else have any questions? I just have one question. I, I believe I heard you say there were three thousand applicants for open choice?
Yeah, last year, yeah, I'll, I'll further clarify. Yes, there were three thousand kids who applied for open choice. Of that three thousand, about two-thousand-eight-hundred also applied to magnet schools.
Okay.
And about two-hundred only applied to open choice without applying to magnets. So, essentially, in our lottery systems, students can apply to up to five magnet schools and up to five open choice districts. But of the twenty thousand total who applied, seventeen thousand did not apply to open choice at all.
So, were all of those students placed?
Oh, no. As I was saying, about four, there are about four hundred new spots in the various districts. So, as you can see, there are many, many more applicants than there are, than there are spots. We do try, and I mentioned students who apply only for open choice, those are kids who, for whatever reason, they typically, they have siblings in a district, and they're the younger brothers and sisters, but we try, we give them preference in the lottery. They get to go first because they're not applying for all the forty-five magnet schools that most of the others are doing.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? All right, well, thank you very much, and thank you for...
Thank you so much for having us.
...being on call so many nights. I appreciate the fact that you were able to make it tonight.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you, and I'm really impressed with Dr. Conway mentioned to the question that was asked about the outcomes that you see, you've seen for the students that you have. As Glenn spoke earlier, academic achievement, racial, economic, ethnic isolation, the kinds of things that you're, you're trying to address in the program, I think what Glenn said, a lot of districts try to take kids younger, so you move them through the system as if they're a part of your school body, they're a part of, of your, your district, which is really a positive. And what we're all looking for are positive outcomes for all the children, for them to be able to thrive wherever they, they are and have a successful experience. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you, and we continue, I know you rattle with tough decisions, but you understand, I think we mutually in the same place, we want kids to be successful wherever they are. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, and you have our contact information, Dr. Conway, if you have any further questions.
Thank you so much for the...
Well, thank you. Have a good evening. Would you like to ask anything? Thank you.
All right, we will now move on to item ten point zero, which is the consent agenda. Motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to move the consent agenda, it's presented.
Mrs. Bush?
Second.
Any items that would like to have pulled, Mr. Stansfield?
I would like to pull item I.
The last one?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion on the floor for items A through H. Oh, I'm sorry, this is wrong. I pull item C, just ask a question, please. Anyone else on the floor? Okay, now we'll vote on A, B, D, E, F, G, H. Okay, all those in favor? We'll start with Mr. Stansfield on item I.
Thank you. I was just curious on this particular policy, is this a totally new policy?
Yes.
And is this something that boards of education are starting to do? I just, it seems interesting that we're going to self-evaluate, so I was just curious if this is a common trend or if it's, you know, is this coming from Cave or where this particular item came from?
Actually, the board I was with for the previous ten years did a self-evaluation every year, so I think it's been around for a long time. Cave has a form that they used at that point, so that would do a self-evaluation and see where it'd get better. It also learns then the principles of what the board does, and this has been a conversation in the Lighthouse District Program that the board's been involved in for a year now.
Any other questions on that? Does anyone want to make a motion, Mr. Hall?
Motion to approve item I.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? No one cares. Thank you, and now, Mrs. Arnott, is it C?
Yeah, on page seven of those minutes, there's a reference that board members asked Dr. Bezel to provide information about the timeline for ordering. In the same minutes, the board asked information to be provided about courses at the high school that weren't running. We got that information, I'm wondering about the information regarding purchase timeline for some of the athletic equipment, like pads.
We actually sent the list, but without the timeline, Dr. Bezel didn't have that, and I referred it to the ad hoc committee, which I was meeting this week.
Thursday, Thursday night?
We have Thursday at the high school.
So, we might have that answer at the following board meeting?
Well, she does not have funding for most of this, so I think that's going to be a conversation with the athletic committee as to the priorities and where you would want to put them in the fifteen, sixteen budget or put them, they're not capital items, most of them. They're too small.
But there will be a report back after the ad hoc committee is in?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on item C? Stansfield wants a motion to approve item C. Mr. Stansfield?
Sure.
Second? Mrs. Russell? All those in favor? To me, thank you very much. Now, we'll move on to item three point zero, secretary's report. Opportunity for the board to add or delete agenda items, does anyone want to add or delete an agenda item today?
Mrs. Arnott? Could I add at the discretion of the chair, just an update on school-based health plan? Just an update. Mr. Picaro alluded to, it's moving, I'd just like to know if it has.
Can we put it on our, the next board hearing so Mr. Picaro can be here for that?
I think it'd be just as simple, has anything happened?
No, the answer is no.
No?
Then I have my vote. Any other additions or deletions to our agenda? Okay, we'll move on to three point two, Rockville High School Student Representative Report.
Good evening. So, today I'm going to start with a couple sports updates. The wrestling season is over. The team did very well this year. We sadly did not have anyone who made it to states, but we had two people who got right there and lost in the qualifying match, but they both had a very good season. Our seniors did a very good job. It was a hard season, a lot of people losing out because of injuries, and some of us just not having time to participate. So, the team took a big hit in terms of members, but overall, they finished strong, and I think they had a very good season. This weekend, I believe, Haley Hasty placed third and fourth in track events, I'm not exactly sure which ones, because, you know, it kind of sounds like the same thing to me. But she did very well setting records for not only Rockville but for herself. And she will be going to the New England Tournament this weekend in Boston. She should do very well there, I think. So, we look forward to hearing about that. This Friday and Saturday, the RHS Drama Department will be putting on the annual murder mystery. I believe the play starts at either six or seven, I'm not entirely sure, I don't remember which. Tickets are seven dollars at the, at the door, five in advance, and ten for a splash zone. I don't really know what that is, but from what I understand, you apparently get to be involved with the play, I don't know the specifics. But the play should be a good time, I think, I think you should all attend. I know I'm going to be there on Saturday, it should be, should be a good night. The murder mystery is played and is written by the students and just created from their imagination, so it's always usually a good time.
Seven P.M.
Seven? I had one of, I had a right. And also tomorrow, pending any more setbacks, the RHS Rampage, the newspaper that has not been released in, I believe, eight years, will be coming out. With a new class called Publications, we finally had the time and the manpower so we will put together a newspaper, all written by the students, all photographed by students, we have comics and they're drawn by the students, and that's going to be released tomorrow during the lunch waves. I think that's about it.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for her? Mrs. Arnott?
Is the Rampage something you sell?
As of right now, we are not selling it, but if it grows in popularity, we might sell it for like a quarter, but since this is the first edition, we're just going to be giving it away.
Does it online anywhere?
Not as of right now, but we could post it online, or I could bring in a copy to the next board if that's needed. Would the board be impressed if everyone had their own copy?
No, it would be...
Okay.
Ready, Mrs. Bush?
Do you know who we would contact to get information, more information on the murder mystery?
To get more information on the murder mystery, I would contact either Ms. Nordland or the drama directors, Ms. Mendelson, right? Okay, so I'd contact either of them. Those are probably your best bets, if I have more of the murder mystery.
Thank you. Can you get tickets from the office of the high school?
Some at the door. Yeah, some at the door, and I believe you could get them from the office as well. I know that all the students who are participating in the play are given tickets and they're selling them, so.
Any other questions for her? Thank you very much, we appreciate you. All right, we'll move on to item four point zero, community forum. Opportunity for comments on agenda items, potential future agenda items, or general information provided to the board from citizens and community organizations. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board tonight? Please come forward, state your name and address. I'd be quiet if you want.
Good evening, Lori Vador, Sixty Patricia Drive. A little different than what I usually have, this is kind of things that have been discussed more in social media lately, but about in-town and things at our schools. And they're not all entirely your problems, but Lori, that you're necessarily the group to deal with them, but want to make you aware of what's going around, around the schools. One, you guys have heard this before, but the safety concerns about traffic, it's even worse now, of course, with the snow. The crossing guards are being endangered more than ever. I know the, the school safety committees have talked about this in the past, and the safety committees, I know, include principals, the police, some people here from Central Office. It's not getting better. The crossing guards, I mean, there are parents, walking parents who drive their kids to the crossing guard, you know, in the neighborhoods because it's so cold right now, and some of them are actually putting their cars out in the street in front of the crossing guard when they're walking the kids across because the speeding car is coming by the school. There are, and somebody needs to do something because unfortunately, if once an accident happens, then people are going to start blaming you guys. It's, we, I have a friend who lives across the street from Lake Street School, they say at least once a week, there is a car locking their brakes coming up to a crossing guard. It happens in front of Center Road School, I'm sure it happens in front of Maple Street, I'm not sure about, you know, I haven't heard, personally heard stories from Northeast and Skinner myself, but I know of at least three schools that are having issues with that. I don't know if it's something where we can get the town to put blinking signs out at the start and the end of the school day, but it's gotten bad. And like I said, with the snow now, visibility is even worse. School parking lots aren't any better. Unfortunately, I'm lucky enough to have bus students, but my daughter is on safety patrol this year, so every other week, I get to deal with the drop-off procedure at Center Road. And again, I know there's nowhere to put the snow, but it was a bad situation before, it's worse now. Actually, even today, in the, the main driveway, I had a hard time sitting in the driveway with the school bus, we were passing each other, and it wasn't wide enough. There are issues with drop-off in general. The Center Road timeline is that no student is supposed to be in the building before seven-fifty. These are rules that parents are not necessarily adhering to, same control students can be dropped off from seven-forty-five to seven-fifty, and then parents can drop off from seven-fifty beyond. Not necessarily the school's fault, the parents are choosing to drop their kids off before that, but there's also nobody dealing with it. There's nobody in the parking lot. Sometimes principals are out there, but it's really a free-for-all. There have been altercations between parents and the parking lots, I mean, it's, it's getting kind of ridiculous. And parents that have, I mean, this is my first year of really dealing with this whole thing, but parents who have been dealing with the parking lot for years say this is definitely the worst year ever. Again, I know it's not really a problem that you guys can deal with from here, but know that it is an escalating situation, and it's getting a little heated. And then, the one other area I wanted to mention, and the Community Engagement Committee has kind of touched on this, but looking for consistency in the, in the school buildings with one thing... with one thing in particular is we have the school wellness policy with only healthy snacks and no food in the classrooms with celebrations. However, the cafeteria is still selling chips and snacks to the kids at lunchtime. I'm not sure. It's a little inconsistent that you're going to say, okay, parents, you can't send in these snacks in the classroom, but we'll sell them to the kids at lunch. And then actually, parents, again, at Center Road are saying the same things for the rec program, which, you all know that Parks and Rec, that's not you guys. But Parks and Rec gives the kids candies, cookies, you know, cereal. And again, that's between the parents and rec, yes, but if there was some kind of rules in the school building, like if we're going to have a healthy school policy, let's have a healthy school policy. One of the teachers actually mentioned that same thing with rec program. The rules on the playground during recess that the teachers have set for the kids, the rec program doesn't follow those same rules. So, well, the school has a rule that we don't climb the slide from the bottom. The rec program allows the kids to climb the slide from the bottom. Like, can't we just get on, all get on the same page around here? And even, you know, honestly, even PTO events where we have the students after school, we had school at the end the other day. The school fair is coming, by the way, I'll tell you all that. The Center Road School Fair, many of you are familiar with that. The date is Saturday, March 7th, from 10 to 2. That is the best event at Center Road School. And everybody's welcome. It's basically, for anybody who hasn't been there, it's an indoor carnival, games, raffles, bake sale, which, yeah, goes against what I just said about healthy food consistency. But that's a Saturday. And when the students are in the building, the students know the rules when they're there during the school day. The students don't know the rules when they're there at school at night. And I don't know, somehow if we had those, these are the rules of the building that everybody should be following. I mean, as a community, that seems like something we should all be able to pull off and get on the same page. So, that's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Laurie, I appreciate it. Does anyone else wish to address the board this evening? Okay, seeing that, we will move on to item 5.0, personnel. 5.1, administrative retirement.
Yes, Dr. Mandel has chosen to retire. And so he has decided that, he has promised that he will stay on with us in a role of consultant until we find someone. It's a specialized role. I'm hoping, we did, it is a role that is in the administrative contract. So last week when we posted, we did post that position as well. So he is going to, his leaving is going to be a great loss certainly. He has built our adult head program quite a bit.
Mrs. Arndt?
I move to accept with regret that retirement of Dr. Carl Mandel effective March 1st, 4:50.
Is there a second, Mr. Moore?
Second motion.
Any discussion or comments? I just want to say that we appreciate his years of service and he has done a fabulous job. He will be next. Are all those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Item 5.2, since it is an executive session, I would just ask that we move it to the end of the meeting. Is everyone okay with that? So people don't have to stick around? Thank you. And we'll move that to after 9.0. And now we'll move on to item 6.0, curriculum 6.1, new course proposals.
Thank you. The Board of Education's Curriculum Subcommittee has discussed the course proposals and it was brought before the board last week, or two weeks ago at this point. Ms. Marin is here and she might be able to, hopefully will be able to answer any questions that you have about those courses. I think I also included in your packets a list of courses that did not run this year that are in the program of studies. And Ms. Marin did provide you with a brand-new program of studies as well, if you would like that. That is yours. So there were approximately 30 classes, I think, listed in the program that did not run this particular year. And it does change every year. I think the request was how many have not run in the last four years or several consecutive years. And different ones run every year depending on student interest. But Ms. Marin is here to answer questions about those courses.
I think the concern last week, the last meeting, is that when new courses are added, some courses are dropped. But I think that that is not really done in the last five or six years. We just run courses based on enrollment and interest, right? Does anybody have any thoughts on these new course proposals?
Mrs. Arndt? I move to adopt the new course proposals as presented. Is there a second, Mrs. Bush?
Excited.
Any discussion, comments, concerns? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Thank you. And now we will move on to item 7.0, 7.1, approval of the technology grant application.
This is the second round of the technology grant from the state of Connecticut. Last year, excuse me, the board did receive a technology grant and we have applied again. In essence, all those pages do tell you that we were looking to install enterprise-level wireless systems in each of the five elementary schools and also provide one part with 25 Chromebooks in each of those schools. So 175 Chromebooks. That's, overall, that fits into the direction we're going in our technology plan. And this has been discussed with the town's IT department as well. So I would ask that you approve the grant application.
Mr. Moore?
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education approve the Connecticut State Department of Education Technology Grant Application, the district technology upgrade to support transition to the new standards 2014-2015 for $208,800. And if the grant is awarded, that the Board of Education accept that grant.
Mr. Moore is the second. Any discussion or comments or questions?
I just have one question because I noticed in here there, the board has to come up with matching funds, $64,000. Do you have any plans to where that might come from?
That is correct. And right now, we're hoping to use, I think, some of the funds from this year. We're not allowed to use the Alliance District Grant Fund, some other grant to do this. So Mr. Picaro was hopeful that our portion would come half from this year and half from next year. If it's the wireless system, then that is a capital item. That's a huge item. And so we will be able to do that. But I don't think the Chromebooks, we can't. So we're hoping to look at the end of this year, can we split our portion, which is approximately 30%, so it's about $60,000.
So you're saying the wireless is the capital that would come from our capital, right?
Correct. I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
All right. All right, any other questions, comments? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. And now onto item 7.2, approval of the 2015-16 district calendar.
So I've provided you with a draft of the calendar. But we did ask members of the public and staff members to answer four questions. The questions were about the beginning of school, Columbus Day, Good Friday, and April vacation. We did not ask about Veterans Day. We've been doing that for several years now. Although there were a lot of comments about Veterans Day. Both ways. So just to, this is an unusual year where Labor Day happens to be as late as it could possibly be, on the 7th of September. So we have two, well, we have a proposal of beginning the 26th of August, which is the last Wednesday in August. I asked parents if they would like to begin the last Wednesday in August or the Wednesday before Labor Day, which this year is two different days. And truly, it was 50/50, the percent of parents who resented, which is absolutely amazing. On Columbus Day, I asked whether we should go in or stay out of school because we are allowed to do that. 56% said to stay out of school. Keep it as a day off. The next question was Good Friday. We had 79% of parents saying we needed to stay out of school on Good Friday. And April vacation, we only had 41% of parents who chose the date that I suggested, and I'll explain that in a moment. And 59% chose the next week, the week of the 18th. So we are going to be required for beginning July 1st, 2016, so a year from this July, to follow the regional calendar. And the regional calendar has been put out by CREG and I did provide you with a copy of that regional calendar. CREG is starting the last Wednesday in August, which is why I did put the last Wednesday in August as opposed to the 2nd of September. But that, yeah, 2nd of September, that's certainly up to you. CREG has chosen Election Day as a professional development day. So if you read some of those comments, you'll see that some people want us to be in school on Election Day. But that was part of the common calendar. Good Friday, it was suggested not to go on Good Friday, which is one of the reasons I did ask parents about that. That was pretty resounding at 79%. And then April 11th, the week of April 11th, is the second full week of April and that's suggested on the common calendar from CREG. And so that's why I chose that as opposed to the following week. In addition to that, however, the three towns would pass their calendars and that would be Ellington and Bolton and, who's the other?
Manchester.
Manchester, thank you. They are all taking the week of the 11th. And there were many comments in the survey where people asked us to look at the surrounding districts and choose that week. So even though only 41% chose the 11th, the other three districts and the common calendar chose, I mean, yeah, chose the 11th as well. And so that's why I suggest that to you. It's your decision whether or not to do that. Just, so you remember, by law, we are not allowed to go to school on holidays in December and in January. So that is Christmas Day, New Year's Day, and Martin Luther King Day. So there were many comments that asked us to go to school on Martin Luther King Day and that is against Connecticut state law. So we are not allowed to do that. We can go on Labor Day, we can go on Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, Presidents' Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day. We can go to school on all of those days, but we cannot go on, in those holidays, in those two months. So that's why I've never suggested the Martin Luther King Day. And I know just there were so many comments that I wanted to make that comment. We intersperse the early release professional development days, the green ones, in the same manner that we did this year. And the full-day professional development days, we did similar to this year as well. The one in March coming the day after Easter. We're doing that this year, April 6th. And so that seemed to work out well. In February, the common calendar also suggests the Tuesday as the professional development day. System-wide, the two, district or regional-wide professional development days are supposed to be Election Day and the day after Presidents' Day. And so we did put those in the calendar to suggest those to you. If this is the calendar the board adopts, starting on August 26th, the last day of school would be Tuesday, June 7th. So I turn this over to you for your discussion.
Mrs. Arndt? I recognize that the calendar, no matter what we do with the calendar, we're not going to make people happy, it's kind of volatile. So I don't see anything wrong with the calendar, but I just wanted to make two comments. That Good Friday, being off Good Friday only concerns me in that we're recognizing a Christian holiday, but none of the other holidays. And that seems to me to be inappropriate, maybe not the best. If we're not recognizing other holidays, other religious holidays, then I'm hard-pressed to recognize Good Friday as well. And there were a couple comments about teachers being, you know, putting in a whole week at school and then being worn out by Friday doing professional development. So I'm not suggesting it for this calendar perhaps, but maybe we need to consider having professional development days on Monday. So the teachers are fresh and then the kids get a long weekend and then they come back to school and the teachers don't have to do professional development after they've had a long week at school.
Are you just, are you, I'm sorry, I just want to make this clear. Are you saying do the professional development in the morning and have the kids come in the afternoon? Because those are half-days.
Understood. I'm just responding to the, to some of the comments that said Fridays are difficult. And I think, well, if we can make that better by doing them on a Monday instead of a Friday, I'm not suggesting that change. I'm just thinking it might be something that you want to discuss or consider for the next, for the next calendar.
Mr. Cleaver?
With respect to Good Friday, I'm on the opposite side of the fence on that. I think that's, it may be a Christian holiday, but on the other hand, it's also a tradition. And 79% of the folks that responded to the survey were in favor of it. So I think right there, I think it's not a bad idea to keep it. I know Ellington had on their calendar a proposed graduation date. And I agree, one, others might have done the same. I kind of like that idea. Now, as far as CREG is concerned, we're going to have to adopt their calendar starting in '16, I believe you said, '16, '17. What about days where the weather, as part of the state, is worse than, say, in the Hartford area? Obviously, we'd cancel our schools. Is there any problem canceling and making up the days? Is there holidays at all? There's no, no issues, okay. One other comment too, and it's the law, but with everybody in a region having the same days on and off, there's advantages in terms of planning and so on. But I think one of the things that hasn't really been considered is the fact that available services and places that people can go to, if you want their days off, are going to be mocked. So just a comment, I just think it's not a great idea to have all the districts at the same time, off at the same time. Because whether you're taking the kids out to go to an amusement park or you're going to buy clothes or you're going for dinner or lunch, everybody else is going to have the same idea. So it's going to be, but it's not our problem.
I have a question in regards to the CREG. When we have to adopt the CREG calendar, isn't there like a five-day? Do you know what you call it?
Yes, there are five days that are flexible days for the district.
Not that that necessarily is, but I'm just.
Okay, so flexible in that we can.
We can have day off in that they might not have it on their calendar.
Okay.
Mrs. Stans, oh, Mrs. Russell, is next.
I didn't like what you said, Dr. Conway, about the election days. Are you going to put that back in as a regular day or as a?
No, that's, I left it as a professional development day, which is what we have now. There were some comments from parents asking us to go to school that day. But I left it in as a professional development day mainly because the, it's worked well for us and also the other, the regional calendar has that as a professional development.
Because I just, you know, I know back in the days while we did that, you recognized why we did that.
Mrs. Janssle?
And in regards to the, to the election day, I mean, I understand the parents that get frustrated and, you know, if you've been out there pole-standing at an elementary school in the morning when a parent walks up with a kid and you have to tell them, there's no school today. It's happened on multiple occasions. But on the flip side, you know, the reality is that it is a safety concern. You have people wandering in and out of the school all day long. And respectfully, that's, that's a pretty easy call as far as I'm concerned. The Good Friday thing is interesting to me. I've never worked for a company, for instance, that gave me Good Friday off. I recognize that there are some that do, but, you know, it's a, I tend to agree with Michelle that it's interesting that we recognize that particular holiday. I guess it goes to the demographic makeup of our community that 79% of the respondents want it. And I don't have a particular problem giving it. It's just interesting that that holiday was so hotly fought for in our response versus some of the others. holiday was so highly fought for in our response versus some of the others, so.
Mr. Moore?
I'd like to make an official motion that the Board of Education approve the 2015-2016 district calendar as discussed, give the draft date of 2/23/59.
Any other, well, now more discussion?
I just want to make one comment about Veterans Day, I know that there has been some significant discussion, and people think that going to school is disrespectful, but I think Vernon has done a really good job addressing Veterans Day, because every student is exposed to some sort of recognition, history, celebration, whatever, so I, my belief is that Veterans Day is better honored by students attending school and participating in those programs than simply having a meaningless day off, so I think Vernon has done a good job, and I like the fact that you're sticking with it.
Mr. Moore?
I would echo those opinions, veterans, they're in school, they learn a little bit about what the Veterans Day is all about, and absolutely stand by that.
I think a good role model is what BCS does, you know, with breakfast, the veterans up on the stage, they, you know, I don't know, it's a chorus or meetings from students to bring, remember what they have to give to the veterans.
Mr. Stansfield?
If I'm correct, didn't we also provide the opportunity for students who were intending some sort of function to have an excused absence that day, as long as they could provide? I thought that was part of the discussion a year or two ago, that if they had some sort of veteran-related function that they were going to attend that day, that we would give them an excused absence?
I don't recall that.
No? Okay, maybe I imagined that, sounds like a good idea.
I'm wondering if you have any history, Dr. Conway, about staff or students not being at school for other religious reasons, yah, yom kippur, rosh Hashanah?
I'm, thank you for opening the door. The reason we have Good Friday off is that many, many families would keep their kids home to go to religious services, or certainly would have, you know, 10, 20, 30 years ago, and that's why it started. If our community of Vernon had a very large Jewish population, then certainly, like West Hartford, who does, and many other communities, we would have yom kippur and rosh Hashanah not in school, because parents would keep their children home to engage in religious services. And so, it is not a fact that we are recognizing Good Friday, we are recognizing that we're not gonna have enough kids to have school, and we're not gonna have enough teachers to have school, because they're going to take a religious day, which is their, we're certainly their right. That's why, West Hartford says, why would I open the door to yom kippur or rosh Hashanah? Because I'm not gonna have enough teachers, I'm not gonna have enough kids to have school. So, it isn't actually that we're celebrating or even recognizing the holiday as a holy day, but it's more that we recognize that families are going to exercise their option to keep their children and their families home and together on those holy days, and so that's why we, that's really why we don't have school, that's actually why Christmas, we started not having school on Christmas a million years ago, was because kids, you don't have enough kids to have school? So, anyway, so yes, we do have children and staff members who do miss rosh Hashanah and yom kippur. There may be one or two staff members that do miss one or two other religious holidays, and they just have to put in for those, and that's part of their contract, that they miss those days, and for students there are excused, excused absences from school.
I just want to comment on the Veterans Day, it is a great learning experience for our students, and I actually wish the state didn't have the law that they had to go to school on Martin Luther King Day, because I think they'd be learning a lot if they weren't at school on Martin Luther King Day, but unfortunately, the state has ruled, so. Okay, any other questions or comments on this calendar? You guys really don't mind going back to school on the 26th?
I love surprises.
All right, and we have motion on the floor to approve the calendar as presented, all those in favor? Thanks for my answer, thank you very much. And then we move on to item 7.3, Reports from Board of Veteran Liaisons Regarding Attendance At Organizations and Communities. Anybody have anything to report? Mrs. Bush?
I attended the Agriculture Education Kik and High Auction. It was wonderful to see a lot of people coming out to support that department, and I ended up going home with a delicious pie. So, I encourage you to attend that in the future, it was brilliant.
They were also auctioning a lot of fruit baskets, right?
Yes, there were several fruit baskets, and they did auction off for a nice price, beautifully done.
Anybody else have any reports?
I just have a report from Center Road, Mr. Harrison was there for one of their PTO meetings, and he did a wonderful job of promoting BCS. I don't know if you have all seen this postcard that went out to all fourth and fifth, passing around, fourth and fifth graders to attend their evening of exploration, but he had a great presentation for the parents at the PTO meeting, and answered all their questions, and everybody was very enthusiastic. Also, Read Across America is this Friday, March, I left this Friday, next Friday, March 6th. The Center Road School Invention Convention is on April 1st from 6:00 to 7:00 at night, so if anyone's interested, it's always very exciting to see what they come up with. They will be sending eight students to the state invention convention, which is on May 2nd. And fifth graders from across all of our elementary schools went on a team, to a team-building workshop with high school and college students at this, at Nantuck Community College a couple weeks ago. That's all I have for Center Road, and then the other item is the School Wellness Committee, we have not had any meetings this year, because we didn't have anyone to chair the committee, but since then, Mr. Off just has agreed to chair it, so we're moving ahead of this.
That's all I have. Mr. Kleen?
Sort of echoing what you mentioned, they had a native exploration at RHS where they invited all the BCS students to come up, and it was being offered by someone, and I think he was impressed, and also, my wife got a personal call from Andy Rocket, trying to, you know, answer any questions, trying to encourage our son to go to RHS, and I understand other phone calls have gone out from the high school, I have staff members to prospective students to stay in the district, and I think they're doing a fine job, and I think Joshua will be staying in Vernon for his high school career, so they're doing something right, so my hands off to Mr. Rocket and his staff.
All right, all right, thank you, appreciate it. Does anyone else have any other reports? Okay, we'll move on to item 8.0, Review and Update the Board of Education Calendar. Anybody have any changes or questions on the calendar? Okay, we'll move on to item 9.0, Opportunity for Questions from the Press on Agenda Items. Any questions? All right, now we will move on to, I don't remember what it was, item 5.2, Mr. Moore?
Motion to move to executive session to discuss personnel, providing the superintendent.
And just, the board has taken, most likely not been taking any action at the end of the meeting, so if you want to?
Welcome back, Juan.
Perfect, thank you.
We want to thank all of the voice hosts for coming to see, thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor to move to the second session, and a second, all those in favor? Yes.